All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is September 6th. It is 5:30, and we are here on a special city council meeting. We will begin with the regular session. Tonight, we are here to discuss the 2022-2023 operating budget and capital program, as well as the total tax rate that we will be adopting this evening. We will start off with public hearings on finance. That means we are to hold a public hearing on the proposed 2223 operating budget and capital program. That means at this time, the public hearing is now open on Agenda Item 1.1. If there is anyone who wishes to speak at the public hearing, they may stand up and be recognized. If you do come forward to the podium, please remember to give your name, as well as your address, and then comments can be heard.
I live at 3,008 26th Street in District 3. I wish to address the issue of budget monies allocated toward municipal pools. What's being passed up now is the bulletin list I put together, as well as some excerpted paragraphs from a National Recreation and Parks Association article that summarizes the fact that municipalities all throughout the nation are facing similar challenges with regard to upgrading, rehabilitating, or replacing their city pools. I am respectfully requesting that the city please reconsider how to spend what is left of the funds from the American Rescue Plan Act, which is, I am given to the understanding from attending two previous City Hall meetings, is going to be used to fund three splashpads in place of three municipal pools that are currently in May Simmons Park, Maxie Park, and Rogers Park. Now, as an aside, I am a swimmer. I learned how to swim in a municipal pool in Cincinnati, Ohio. My parents helped create a municipal pool for our neighborhood in Northern Virginia. I became a member of a competitive swim team. I received my lifeguard credentials. That helped fund my way through Texas Tech. And currently, I am a regular lap swimmer at the Texas Tech Aquatic Center, which helps keep me healthy. So I'm speaking from the passion of a pool rat. So anyway, in looking at the aspect of demolishing three of four municipal pools, that will only leave a citizenry of 300,000 or more people with one public pool option that is open and accessible to the public, which would be at Clap Park. I have heard that the Y WCA is offered as an option, but you have to pay a membership fee, and only then are admissions open to the public per use per day, as they have room. To close all the municipal pools but one seems to run counter to the 2022 February resolution of this very council, which stated that the city's number-two area of importance is public health. And that could be read to include "physical public health," as meaning recreation, physical activities, and keeping people healthy. We should all be aware that it is reported that 32% of Lubbock residents were reported as being obese. This includes adults and children. How will three splashpads replacing three municipal pools even begin to provide the citizens with an option to enhance or address their physical health and outdoor exercise needs? Having been at the Tech Rec Center ever since the leisure pool was built in 2009, I can tell you from empirical observation that all those splashpads are marketed to age 1 through 12. Primarily, it is toddlers who use them. The youngsters would rather be in the pool, playing Marco Polo or on a flotation device in the lazy river. They would rather be in a pool than on a splashpad, from my observation. That is anecdotal. I do understand that. Perhaps the Texas Tech Rec Center can give us better data. Anyhow, it seems to me that equity should be a concern here. Recently, the city allocated $1.5 million of the American Rescue Plan Act to create a pickleball court over in McAllister Park. Recently, it opened a dog park in McAllister Park. And I do understand that that's a newly annexed area of the city, and they have recreation needs as well. But I would think that a pickleball court serves a rather limited demographic of middle-aged adults, more or less, whereas a municipal pool can serve the needs of the many. If we break down the demographics, 23.7% of the entire Lubbock population consists of persons under 18 years of age. And as a mother brought up at Sheila Patterson Harris's Town Hall meeting this past Monday, what is there for my middle schooler and my high schooler to do? It seems that we are pushing them into a corner of having very limited recreation options. Now, I am aware that funding is the issue, so what I'm hoping to have the city consider is to reserve those ARPA funds to plow into at least rehabilitating one of those three pools scheduled for demolition, and devising a budget plan for the future where perhaps one pool is rehabilitated or replaced at a time, per Jeremy Atkinson's suggestion at the Town Hall meeting, that this might require a bond issue, if I'm to understand. But in any case, in as well, the handout you have from the National Recreation and Parks Association suggests that other municipalities are partnering with their other youth-oriented groups to create the recreation programming, because I am aware that the demographics or the attendance fell at these municipal pools. But in the last two years, we were under COVID restrictions. I live across the street from a park. Very few people were in Wagner Park. They weren't supposed to be gathered in groups other than families. Also, if I'm a parent with children, I'm not wanting to take them to a rundown facility. So some of those attendance figures could be a bit misleading. If you have a way-cool pool, aquatics facility, such as the one created by Texas Tech for its student body, if you build it, they will come. Thank you. I have all the other details on that handout, but I did not want to unfairly take up more of your time.
Thank you, Ms. Humphries. All right, does anyone else wish to speak on the 2022-2023 operating budget and capital program?
Thank you, Michael Ward, 5417 8th Street. I could almost send in what I have to say, because I keep saying it year after year, hoping I'll get different results, but I think that's insanity that maybe afflicts some of us. But anyway, this time, the budget of all of the funds, for the first time, went over $1 billion, which was shocking, and showed a $60.5 million increase from the previous year. I assume that probably the ARPA funds that have been spent, like 47.5 million of the 56.5 million, has been spent $33 million probably in this particular year. And I'm guessing that a lot of those probably show up in the department budgets. It's a little hard to follow some of that. But of course, the larger ones were Public Safety and the Health Department as well. So probably those are reflected in that and might be a reason for some of that increase. There's also probably more than most of us feel like we can afford to increase the overall pay by 5%, more or less, depending on whatever. But we do have 44 employees, including LPNL, that make over $100,000 a year. No, I'm sorry, not 44, 128. There's 44 employees at LEDA. I'll get to that in a minute. But there's about 128 that make over that, and that's including the LPNL group as well. But there's been a lot of increase also in the general fund, about 14, a little over $14 million increase, over 21, 22 to 275.5 million. And I had hoped that the utility funds in particular, or fees basically, would go down some, because particularly in stormwater, the $40 million that was borrowed, $10 million a year from '08 to '12 for street maintenance, final piece of it paid off. And they kept telling us in previous councils that as soon as that paid off, there would be a decrease, which would help tremendously, even in the commercial and churches and anybody that's in that area that would have large paved areas and so forth. It's costing them a lot, and that gets passed on, adds to inflation of everything else, because they have to pay for it some way in order to stay afloat. And as much as possible, I would urge you to take a long look, if not right now, of lowering. I know it's scheduled to go down some in another year, but some people are struggling from a lot of various things, including inflation, we're all feeling, and some of us don't have a way to get an increase in our income as well if we're a little bit older. But there's also a lot of increase because of the utilities not going down. The utility taxes over the cost of providing the services in franchise fees, pilot property and lieu taxes, transfers into the general fund, and the Citizens Tower debt have increased by $2.5 million since '21-'22. And that's up to $41.8 million. And I was having a meltdown when it was half that or less. And it's getting close to a fifth of the general fund budget, which is a big problem as well. We need to get those utilities down, and that will help a lot of people, and also probably leave them some more money to go spend and increase our sales tax, which is also up considerably. One of the areas, and I know you're not dealing a lot with it right now, but it's critical that you actually look into the cost of economic development, both through the LEDA, 1.8 cent sales tax that we all agreed to and trade for substantial, probably about 12 or 13 cents on our tax rates from that. But there's between LEDA at $19.8 million to be spent this next year, and the market Lubbock, $5.7 million, adds up to $25.5 million going into "economic development," which I've been critical of, mostly because it just flies in the face of free market. It's always picking winners and losers, and I have real problems with how much some of the employees over there. I hate to get into comparisons, but it's still important. But I know the market Lubbock part went down slightly, not in value, but went down to 2 cents over what was about 2.38 cents, something like that. But it still generated considerably more money than the year before because of the huge increase in appraisal creep and other things. There are 44 employees over there, and several of their employees make over $100,000 a year. 44 was a little shocking to me. I hadn't looked at it in two or three years, and it's been growing steadily, how many people actually work in that area. The director, with all of the perks, the cars, phones, deferred compensation, all of those, is making just under $388,000. And that's not in, I don't know whether they get an increase when everybody else does. It seems like they're completely a separate thing that is not answerable to anybody much. But that's about $49,000 more than the city manager makes. And they have 44 employees, and he has 2,400, and has to be an expert on lots and lots of things, and that just is completely out of whack. So I'm not pointing out people or what their value is, but it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Another thing that we really need to get a handle on, and I know it's not happening right now, but there's been more and more hiring of outside consultants, and that gets to be quite expensive. I added up a few, and I never did really put anything out publicly, because in most of the contracts, it had the additional reimbursements for their travel and lodging and food while they were coming here to Lubbock to help us plan our world. Most of these, or many of them, have been hired by the Central Business District, TIF, which is another thing that needs to be looked into. They seem to live in sort of a different universe than what most of us do, and unless you go to those meetings, you have no idea that they're still planning a civic center hotel. And that will involve adding a lot to the civic center itself, making it into a convention center. And they just keep going full ahead and have borrowed even money. But a lot of those consultants have been hired by the CBD TIF, and it's very important that we take a look at some of these when you have your planning session for this next year. Those of you who are new, came in with, now, a lot of, you were drinking from a fire hose to even get up to speed and all. But I think those are some areas, because particularly on the CBD TIF, besides we've been paying the developers, we paid $440,000 or $50,000 to Overland Partners to come in and do the downtown master plan. We've been paying a master developer down there since 2008 or '09. And so those are a few of the things that I think we need to look at. But I would just urge you, I know the, I'll get into the tax rate later, but in a billion-dollar budget, I think there's a lot of places that we can make some decreases without it affecting general services. I've said everybody who's been on the council since probably, I think, '03, when I got the triangle of priorities from Tommy Gonzalez, when he had to make drastic changes because we were just about bankrupt. And it, some of the departments have changed slightly, but still your basics as opposed to your needs and wants that are nice to have, but may not benefit everybody are important to look at as well. So those are just a few things that I'd like for you to consider, and hopefully, we can visit more about it. I've met with some of you, and I'm encouraged that it's going to get better, but it's taking some time, and it's continuing to go up a whole lot in each of those areas. And with the influx of all of the "free" federal money, it's been spent on a lot of different things that we're not going to have year after year. And so make good use of the remainder of it. I think there's, what, a little, after the 2023 budget, maybe $5.6 million left after what you're planning to spend in this budget that's coming up. But let's be real careful with it. It's got to be put to the same test that we do the rest of the budget. Do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Does anyone else wish to speak on Agenda Item 1.1? All right, thank you, Ms. Humphries and Ms. Ward. The public hearing on the proposed budget is now closed, and we will now move to Agenda The council will now hold a public hearing on a proposal to increase total tax revenues from properties on the tax roll in the preceding tax year by 1.36%. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? You may speak now. Again, your name and your address as you come to the podium.
I should have just stayed up there. Could have just added to the end of it, gotten rid of it. Michael Ward again. I was very pleased that you were making an attempt to go back to the no new revenue rate, which didn't take very much. In fact, it seemed a little gimmicky where the cuts were made in order to get there. But all it needed was about $1.25 million out of over the $1 billion. And it seemed like sort of minimal paper changes and not really cuts to any particular things. But I do urge all of you to please adopt the no new revenue. There'll still be more revenue than you had the year before. It's just simply the new construction would be the part of that that would be important. But it doesn't take a whole lot to do that, and to go from 48.3 down to 47 something, I'm not sure. But I did look at all of the changes that were made, and mostly, they seem to be kind of paperwork, or how you would count things, or like underestimating slightly the sales tax, which always gets higher than it would be anyway. And then I think deleting off the budget some permanently 16 salaries for people that hadn't been filled in a long time, and some other things. But I don't think it takes much at all out of a billion-dollar budget to get to that no new revenue rate. It would make people feel a lot better about what you're doing. I'm having people tell me that, is there really any change? Because they're not really seeing it yet, and this would help people feel like we have a new council that's really listening. So do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Does anyone else like to speak on Agenda Item 1.2? You may come forward. All right, the public hearing is now closed on Agenda Item 1.2. All right, we are now moving to Agenda Item 1.3. The council now moved to vote on Agenda Item 1.3. There may be some amendments and some things that happen here, so we will go very slow, just for purposes of the record and those watching here and on closed circuit. This has not happened before, because this is new legislation. So with this no new revenue rate and the voting on this, we will go very slowly so we can make sure that everyone understands, probably including myself. All right, so at this time, is there a motion to approve the 2022-2023 budget?
Mr. Mayor?
Just one moment, Ms. Joy.
Do you want a motion to approve just to start the discussion?
Yeah, we have a motion to approve to start the discussion.
I don't think.
Yes, we do. Mr. Massengo?
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Thank you, Ms. Martinez. All right, now, with a motion and a second on the 2022-23 budget, I will turn it over to Mr. Atkinson at this time for the two items that we have as far as what we have to present, which would be the proposed budget as well as a possible amendment.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, if I could, and I apologize, this is not, I believe, the item that we've called to look at. If I could direct your attention to your packets, and give me just a moment, and I will catch up. Take everybody to the page. And we're almost there. There we go. This is Exhibit G. Exhibit G is on Page 42 of your packets. Exhibit G, this is based on the changes to the proposed fiscal year '23 budget. So this starts with the budget that you reviewed during the week that we did our budget workshops. We have noted these various changes as we've gone through. I'll summarize them briefly. We had a slight adjustment to the compensation in the fire, public safety, dispatch, $29,648. You see the associated increase in benefits, use of reserves underneath that. That's the $36,448. We had a decreased transfer from stormwater. This is Playa Lake maintenance and use of excess reserves. Note that that excess reserves is the stormwater excess reserves. That is not the general fund. Move down now, increase compensation, public works dispatch, and probably can make this larger on the screen, if that helps anybody. Okay? Changes to public works dispatch, which are offset by decreasing temporary employee salaries. And then you see increased professional services and training, north, south, east patrol divisions. The bids for the lawn maintenance came in way above where we had them, so we are proposing to balance those out there. The debt service fund has a $219 change to it. Water and wastewater, I am asking to add an Assistant Director of Water Utilities. This would be a number-two position behind Mr. Spears. To do so, we would delete the position of Water Resource Manager, make these adjustments, offset the $29,000 cost by decreasing professional services budget in the same. Moving down below, fiscal year '21-'22 operating budget and capital program amendments after we filed the proposed budget. So these are items that came forth at prior council meetings. The Central Business District TIF capital fund, increased $500,000. Council, please remember that is donation dollars that was provided by one of our local foundations. Move down to approved on August 23, abandoned vehicle fund, increase appropriation and funding. This is taking cash dollars out of the abandoned vehicle fund and using them to purchase the armored vehicle for the police department. On the bottom there, then, it goes to accept and appropriate two solid waste grants. Let me scroll the screen up a little bit there, in the amount of $10,000. So this is money coming to us through South Plains Association of Government, used for various solid waste programs that we do throughout the year. Mayor and council, with that, that is all that has changed from the proposed budget that we reviewed. So we have that. I believe that is what the motion is based on. It's on the table now. Mayor, I can hold for question or discussion, or we can go to your next step.
All right. Mr. McBrier?
Yes, at this time, Mayor, I move to amend Item 1.3 by substituting a revised Exhibit G, which I will now pass out to each of the council members. So this will be to revise the Exhibit G that has just been presented, and that was before us in our packet today, and further that all conforming changes be made to the ordinance and exhibits that are necessitated by this substitution.
All right, I have a motion to amend with Exhibit G. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Now we can move to discussion on Exhibit G. Now, Mr. Atkinson, the reason I bring this up, for us to present this now, is because this was discussed in our budget discussion. We had asked you with the current operating budget, and then it had been requested of you of ways you could get to a no new revenue rate, correct? Or if there were to be any other amendments presented, this would be a way to get to those other amendments. Is that correct? All right. So we have a motion and a second on Exhibit G. Any other discussion? Ms. Joy?
I have an amendment, so the proposed amendment.
Okay.
I move to amend the proposed amendment by directing the funds realized from the elimination of, number one, four heavy equipment operator three positions from paved streets; number two, one senior grounds maintenance worker position from park maintenance; and number three, three park construction and maintenance worker positions for park maintenance, in the approximate sum total amount of $440,116, to increase staffing and operations of the police department in connection with enhanced enforcement police department in connection with enhanced enforcement of the juvenile curfew ordinance.
I have a motion to amend Exhibit G.
I'll second the motion.
And I have a second for Mr. Massengill. All right, so we can take discussion at this time on, Ms. Joy, do you have a copy of the proposed amendment? One moment, please. All right, so in front of me, I have an amendment proposal from Ms. Joy and seconded by Mr. Massengill that would appropriate $440,116 for the enhanced enforcement of the juvenile curfew ordinance. I think if we started getting into these amendments, would this have an effect on the tax rate, Mr. Atkinson, as far as the proposed budget or no new revenue rate?
Mayor, I believe this does. So let me walk through this and be sure that I'm keeping up with the math. We are amending, we propose to amend the amended motion presented by Councilwoman McBreyer. Councilwoman McBreyer's motion was based on the changes to go down to the no new revenue rate. The amended amendment that is on the table in the approximate amount of $440,000, that would take you $440,000 away from the no new revenue rate. In other words, you would land between the two tax rates.
All right, we have an amendment and we have discussion. Is there any further discussion on Ms. Joy's proposed amendment? Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Martinez-Garcia.
My first budget as a city councilperson, so I want to navigate through this as easily as possible. Do we not need heavy equipment operators? Do we not need ground maintenance workers and park construction and maintenance workers? I just want to make sure that we don't need these people because, I mean, there's some issues in our parks, there's some issues on our streets. I just want to make sure, do we not need these?
Mr. Atkinson?
Certainly.
Well, let me not put you in that situation. Are these some of the proposed positions that have been perennially, I can't say the word, I'm sorry. Perennial, just say it for me.
I'll try this. Mayor, these represent a portion of the positions that are perennially vacant in those functions.
That was an easy word to say.
It's very difficult for me tonight. Thank you so much. Yeah, I think those are what we had discussed early on in the budget when we'd gone through workshops. These are positions that we can remain unfilled. They have not been filled. How bad, I just say it that way. So I don't know, those are definitely necessities. I don't know that those positions are going to be filled. I think that from my position, obviously, and Ms. Joy and I have talked about this, the juvenile curfew is extremely important. And we're going to be bringing that back up because it has to be brought back before this council, it has to be voted on, and I think we need to have further discussion on this. I think there are ways where I think this is something we need to discuss in open session and discuss as a council before we just decide we're going to spend $440,000 on a program or at least implement it and put it in place. I believe that we would have the funds to implement this, at least as a try and an attempt, and then as we come into the fall, we see if there's something we need to look at in budgeting. So that would be my position. I would be against this because if we do this in this amendment, we would not get to the no new revenue rate, which I think is going to be important to our taxpayers, which I think we will bring up later.
Mayor, can I add one more thing, please?
Yes, Ms. Martinez-Garcia.
I believe that both of these, the no new revenue rate is important to my district, and I believe that this increases equally as important to my district because we are dealing with some issues. But how can we make it happen so that we can bring them both into fruition? That's the magic question. Steve, you know everything. Tell me.
Well, let me get some, what increase are you, give me some clarification. What increase are you, are you referring to Ms. Joy's amendment or are you referring to the proposed budget?
With Ms. Joy's amendment, would that increase so that we would not meet the no new revenue?
I guess Ms. Joy's amendment is an increase, would be a suggested increase to the no new revenue tax rate.
All right, any other questions you have, Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
Not yet.
Mr. McBreyer?
I understand Councilwoman Joy's concern about the curfew enforcement, and I think that's important even in my district as well. But I would prefer that we look at ways of addressing that with the current police force that we have and see if we can't see if it could be done that way before we move to add, you know, almost a half million dollars worth of money back into an already large budget. I prefer that we try to stay with the no new revenue rate for this year.
All right, Dr. Wilson?
Yeah, I agree with Mayor and Councilwoman McBreyer. You know, at this time, I also agree, curfew is a big issue that we want to make sure, you know, our citizens are safe, but our citizens are suffering financially, you know, right now in a year of recession, I mean, in a year of high inflation. And with, I think we can look within our own programs and see where we can make a difference and try to stay at the no new revenue rate this year, and then see, like Mayor said, that we could potentially budget this in next year when we have a chance to work with our wonderful police department and try to find a program where we can implement something. So I'm also, right now, going to have to be against this. I think a tax break for our citizens is more important, and getting this down to the no new revenue rate is what we want to do this year.
All right, Ms. Joy?
This item is extremely important. As mentioned earlier, we do have a curfew ordinance in the city of Lubbock, and it has to be renewed every three years, which happens to occur in October, before October 30th. So it's important in this budget because we're straddling, our fiscal year ends on September 30th. Now, if you've not been paying attention to what's going on in our city when it comes to juveniles, then you probably just need not to listen to any of this. But all of us know what's going on with our gangs, with our juveniles, and with some of their actions that are taking place in this city. And to sit here and say, I think it's more important to get to a no new revenue rate than to address this issue, somebody's not thinking about the city. They may be thinking about districts, they may be thinking about the person that they promised to do that. That's not what's important here. What's important is what's going on with our juveniles. The police department will have for us at our next meeting an agenda item on this very position, to let everybody know the statistics that go with it. It's very, very difficult to have an ordinance on the books that you can't enforce the way it should be enforced. Now, somebody says, oh, well, our police department can handle it as it is. No, that's not what's going to happen. If you pick up a juvenile who is in violation of curfew, you must have a place to take them, and it must be manned by a police officer. We have three new patrol divisions, and we'll soon have a new administration building. We have the place for them to be and to be taken. What this will do is give us the overtime pay so that we can man those because those patrol divisions are not open after 5:00 or 5:30 p.m. And the ordinance says either 11:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., or 12:00 p.m., midnight until 6:00 a.m., depending on the day of the week. We also have a provision that says during the daytime when they're supposed to be in school, this ordinance is effective. So what these funds will do is will give us, and it will be mandatory overtime for police officers, so that if a patrol person picks up a juvenile, that juvenile can be taken to that location that's been designated by the police chief and left there with an officer who will contact their parents or guard in our responsible adult. Then our officers get back on the road, they get back on the streets where they belong. This is an efficiency that should occur, and it is necessary to start solving the problem of our juveniles. So I think it's very important in this budget, and it is more important than whether or not we go down to the no new revenue rate, which we've been hearing about from our legislators and several people in this room. But what's it worth? What's it worth? We had an event yesterday, and unfortunately, we can't do anything about the curfew part of it because it was on a holiday. But we had three juveniles steal a car, go do donuts in a parking lot, run over a police officer, and then have to get chased so that they can be charged. We've got problems with our kiddos. And this council needs to be responsible for that, and this is an easy way to do it. And it makes a lot more sense when you look at the community as a whole, and you get out of your districts, and you get out of what you've been told, and you look at this in terms of the value that it will give and the help that will give to our citizens.
I always think it's interesting that money always solves problems, and bureaucrats a lot of times think that you throw more money at it and suddenly you're going to fix a problem, because that's essentially what's being said. No one here, especially myself, has ever said that we don't care about law enforcement. In fact, I would put my record with law enforcement up against anyone up here and supporting law enforcement. But just because you throw another $440,000 at a problem doesn't mean it's going to be fixed. There's a lot we need to discuss before we just say at the 11th hour that we're going to suddenly throw a half a million dollars at a problem. Why wasn't this brought up at workshops? Why wasn't this brought up at another time for us to discuss? This is something that should come up with open council as opposed to a last-minute effort to have our tax rate be increased. We very much, we have a billion-dollar budget. We should be able to find the funds to attack this problem without having to re-increase taxes on our taxpayer. Every time, the answer is, well, let's spend more money as opposed to decreasing the amount of money that we should, that our taxpayers should spend. And we're going to come to our taxpayers this year and say, we're going to increase your tax rate, and we want $200 million for a street road bond package. And that's not fair to the taxpayer. There is money, they can be attacked. I want to know how many curfew violations we've had this year? How many arrests have there already been? How big of a problem is this? Is this a problem that the police department has said, you know, we had 75 kids that we didn't know where to take because we had nowhere to place them, and so we need $450,000 to address this problem? We haven't heard those statistics. We don't know what those numbers are. How many times have we, how many problems have we had over the last year to where we say that this is a problem that we have to spend half a million dollars on? Or are there other avenues and ways we could attack this rather than just say, let's spend more money? This is legislating with an amendment that was never even brought up until today. We want to say that, we could put a lot of things into categories, Ms. Joy, and say that they're more important than money. So you want to spend $440,000 on curfew issues, and this is an issue. Well, why don't we spend $440,000 on hiring more officers or increasing their pay? Why don't we spend $440,000 on a number of other areas that are important to the taxpayers rather than always saying, I want to increase your taxes. I want to increase your taxes because things are more important. At some point, you have to make a difficult decision and say, this is the budget, this is the budget we're going to stick with, and we're going to choose not to spend more than we brought in this year with the no new revenue rate. And I don't know that that'll happen next year. It may not. But at this point, we would make a choice, we have to make hard choices. And the budget that's been proposed to us with an option to reduce these areas, these perennial jobs, and remove some of these things to get us down to the no new revenue rate, I think is a smart option. Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
Will you let Mark McBreyer speak first?
Before it's been yielded to you, Mr. McBreyer.
To Ms. Joy's point, I think all of us here are concerned about our city, and we represent our districts. But in everyone's district, there are people who, unlike probably all of us up here, live on fixed incomes or have a low wage, and they're incredibly affected by the rate of inflation this year that has gone up far more than anybody's salary or wages have gone up. And we can't sit up here because it doesn't affect us that much and act like no one else should be concerned about that. I think we have to think of all citizens of Lubbock, and I think we have to look first at a billion-dollar budget and finding ways to direct those funds towards priorities. And if indeed, curfew violations are a problem, then we can address that in a billion-dollar budget. And so I believe we need to stay committed to a no new revenue rate for the benefit of our taxpayers, especially those who find themselves in very difficult situations this year, making ends meet. And I just cannot ignore them, and they are citizens of this town as well.
Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
I'm torn between both of the subjects, to be quite frank with each of you. I want to do the responsible thing because I know that we have issues with young people that are violating curfew. But on the other hand, we also have families that are dealing with difficult times. So I'm very torn by both of these subjects, and I want to do the best thing. And obviously, we can't poll the public, but I do wish we would have had a little bit more time to digest this, and I wish that I could ask the police department their thoughts on this. But I know that's not possible, so I guess I call for the vote.
We got a call for a vote?
Second?
Second? I've called for a vote, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we've got a call for a vote on Ms. Joy's amendment.
I'm sorry. The vote would be on whether to end the debate or not at this point?
Correct. We have a vote, we have a motion and a second to call for a vote on Ms. Joy's amendment. All in favor of?
No, that's not, that's not right.
All in favor of?
Point of order.
Point of order, Mr. Massengill.
Just clarification that we're voting to end or continue.
Correct.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, that's all right.
And further point of order.
There's a motion and a second, Ms. Joy, to call a vote.
And I have a point of order.
We have a point of order. We, first of all, have to carry a vote, whether to end the debate. All in favor of ending the debate?
It requires five.
All in favor of ending the debate? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
All right, four to three. Ms. Joy, the point of order is to you.
Well, when you call for a question, because we're doing this electronically up here, we have people who have been in line waiting to speak. And so the question is, are they allowed to finish their discussion prior to that call for a question?
Ms. Joy, the vote did not carry. You may proceed. Mr. Massengill, the floor is yours first, and then we will proceed to Ms. Joy.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I support Ms. Joy's amendment, and the reason I do is because we've got to do something to stop our juveniles from killing each other. And we have, and we have multiple instances of that. So I admire her for, regardless of the timing, for her suggestion to try to change what we're doing in that regard. First of all, we, so what we, what you see here is you've got two budget proposals. Both decrease the tax rate. Both decrease the tax rate. Okay? There's been, there's been talk of increase. These two proposals both decrease the tax rate. One decreases the tax rate more than the other. Now, I've got the advantage that I've been doing this for a long time. It's not just about this budget. We have to be able to look forward to know what's coming. And the farther that we drive the tax rate down, regardless of how someone's going to argue it's immaterial or doesn't take much more to get there, puts us at a disadvantage when we do this again in 12 months. A very likely situation that in 12 months, this council's going to have to consider raising the tax rate to the maximum. And I don't believe that our taxpayers want big swings when we already have the option to lower the tax rate. So I cannot support the no new revenue tax rate. We've committed as a community to keep our ISO rating, we have a great ISO rating right now. And to continue to maintain that, we've committed to build another fire station to keep up with our growth. We already know that next year, without any other changes to our budget, that we are looking at a $1.6 million increase just when we start to consider that fire station. And that's going to put us in a situation to not talk about decreasing but increasing. And so it is my opinion that it is not great policy to drive the tax rate to the no new revenue tax rate.
You yield the floor, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Ms. Joy.
This is not the first time the issue with juveniles has been raised. I've discussed it with Mayor on several occasions. And because of my concern about what's been happening in this city, I talked to Chief Mitchell. I asked him for some, for some information. And it didn't make me feel any better because we've got two police departments also involved in this. One is the LISD Police, and the other is the Lubbock Police Department. I don't know if Texas Tech is helping us with our juveniles or not. I kind of doubt it, they've got their hands full. But I asked, I went to Chief Mitchell and asked him what his feelings were on this. Somebody wants to know that. He's here, and I'll certainly yield the floor to him if he wants to come up and tell us how he feels about this particular issue. Whether it should have been raised early in the budget process, I don't know. We didn't know until the last meeting that if we cut these positions, that there was any money available to do that. So after that meeting, I'm going, okay, if we've got that much money available, we can I moved here in 1962, and I remember very much what the city was like. I was young, kind of a sleepy little city. Times have changed, everything's different, and some of the arguments that we hear over and over and over are from people who just do not join in with the growth that we've I've been on this council, and I've seen how it works, and it's not pretty. But I don't know how, with the growth that this city has had in the past two years, let's just take the past two years, that you can take a look at that no new revenue rate and justify it. With growth comes expenses and demands from our citizens. Now, we hear those, everybody on this dais hears, I want what they would like to have, what they would like to have fixed, how we would like to have our neighborhoods treated, how we would like for our, our city to prosper. We have tonight, at this public hearing, two people. One of those concerned about an issue that's really, I guess in a way it's part of the budget, but not part of the budget because the funding is by ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan funds. And the other one is from the same person who comes every time to speak on the same I have not received a single call to tell me that I think the no new revenue rate is the thing to do. I have had people approach me wanting to make sure that this city can take care of the needs of its citizens. I still think it is more important to have our juveniles taken care of now, not tomorrow, not a month from now, two months from now. Keep in mind, this is a one-year budget. It is not a two-year budget, it's a one-year budget. And so we're going to be facing the same issues starting in about May of 2023, and it'll be a different set of issues and a different, different set of funding options. So now that we know we do have the money to do this program, I would like for Chief Mitchell to come up and address the council on this issue.
Are you able to ask two questions?
Sure.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. How are you guys this evening? Chief Floyd Mitchell, Lubbock Police Department. Yesterday, I believe it was crystallized to the men and women of the Lubbock Police Department, the issues that a lot of our citizens are facing every day when it comes to our juvenile crime and juvenile criminal activity. The most tenured member of our police department, Larry Barnhill, a 47-year veteran of the Lubbock Police Department, a 40-year police officer, was almost ran over and killed by a 14-year-old driving a stolen vehicle. This morning at 9 o'clock, me and my executive command staff, along with the Mitchell squad, got to see the video of what occurred. This 14-year-old, without hesitation, turned the wheel and drove that vehicle right at Larry. He hadn't been two steps out of his vehicle and could have killed him. The issues that we are facing with our juveniles is not new. One of the issues that Councilwoman Joy talked about is a positive issue for the state of Texas and the city of Lubbock, our population growth. People are moving to Texas, hence Lubbock, at unfathomable rates. The population growth that you have seen within the city of Lubbock comes with its issues. It comes with parents, our absentee parents, which results in some of the crime we see with our juveniles. The men and women of the Lubbock Police Department work hard to identify these individuals and move them into the detention centers. Most of the time when we come in contact with these juveniles, they have committed some type of criminal offense, and we end up taking them to jail. One of the things that we talked about was, do we take them to the detention center for the juveniles and also issue the juvenile citation? This is something that we didn't do in the past, or we didn't do as often as we probably should have in the past, to try to hold the parent more accountable. That's something that we have, we are going to change, that when we come into contact with these individuals that are committing criminal acts, we're also going to write the juvenile ticket. When it comes to the juvenile ordinance and the juvenile curfew and reopening up a detention center on our weekend nights, it is something that we believe will assist us in identifying and really trying to hold the parent more accountable for the juveniles. Because that's what we see, is that we have the absentee parents, and the juveniles are out there committing criminal activities. We completely understand that these parents sometimes are at work, and they're single parents, and they can't be with all their children. But it is causing a safety issue for our community at large. In talking with Councilwoman Joy, we talked about what it would take for us to do that. The other major issue that we have faced here with the Lubbock Police Department, again, is not just the Lubbock Police Department, it's the state of Texas, and it's the United States. It's filling our vacancies. Right now, I have, I have 19 true vacancies in my police department. I have two more people that will leave here before the 16th of this month, and I have another person who has turned in his papers to leave on October, before the end of October. We have another 19 individuals that just started the break-in period, and they will not be on the street by themselves until the 1st of January. To open up a detention center at one of our patrol division stations, it's going to take an overtime assignment. It's going to take a mandatory overtime assignment, and that's what I explained to Councilwoman Joy. I don't have the people to man that facility as an assignment and respond to calls for service. So if we are going to be able to do this, it's going to have to be a mandatory assignment. And just like I explained to the councilwoman, it's going to be, you go from the lowest serial number, and you work your way down, and every weekend, three days a week, you're going to take six officers, four of them will be out there looking for juveniles, two of them will be in the detention center at the patrol division station. I would love to be able to make this a permanent assignment through where I assign police officers to do it. I just don't have the staffing to do that right now. One of the things that we talked about is we're going to try our best to do three police academies in 2023 to try to fill these vacancies. What you, as the council, have done to increase the police pay, we are hoping will help us attract, attract officers. But we're fighting against all of Texas and all of the United States when you come to that pool of applicants. But to Councilwoman Joy's point, we can do it, but it's going to, it's going to be an overtime assignment. We are looking at ways, because we have perpetual vacancies, of can we try to float it and see if, how it would work with those vacancies and the pay that comes with those vacancies? So yes, there are several different things out there that we could try to do. But when she approached me with this, I was like, yes, I'm on board with that if we can get it to work. So I'll stop there and see if there's any questions for me.
Ms. Martinez-Garcia.
Do we currently charge parents fines? Do we hold them accountable? And where do we keep kids now?
So when we issue them the ticket, they go to the juvenile court and the juvenile judge. And I believe the ticket right now, the last number I saw was $164. Nathan might be able to help me on what the exact charge is, when they are charged. But usually, they get community service, and sometimes that fee is deferred. But the fee that I saw was $164 and some type of community service to bring that parent in to hold your child more accountable.
Dr. Wilson?
I have a couple of questions for you, Chief. So was this concern or these finances brought up with Mr. Atkinson during kind of the pre-budget departmental discussions with you and your staff?
We actually talked about this, and Assistant Chief Nathan White submitted a memo, I want to make sure I get the date right. This was back in March of, March of 2022 is when we first started talking about this, and we came up with a plan. And we talked about putting a plan into place, but we were having two big issues at the time. We were having issues in regards to our traffic violations and our traffic accidents. And Mr. Atkinson asked me, okay, if you want to spend the money, where would you spend it right now? And based on the number of fatalities that we were seeing at that time, I told him that I would rather spend it here on this particular issue to try to slow down all of the speeders and the number of fatality accidents we were, we were having. So we did have that discussion, but he asked me which direction I wanted to go, and that's what I told him, that's the direction I wanted to go.
Yeah. And so, I mean, I agree with you. You and I have sat down before, and you've told me that patrol for, you know, traffic accidents, we have our flat highways out here where everybody drives, you know, 50 mile an hour over the speed limit, was a huge concern for you. And I know when, you know, Assistant Chief White, when he was, when we did our presentation, we learned that any given time during any shift, maybe we have 30 to maybe 40 officers out on patrol at any time, which to me seems very low. And I hear when you're up here talking, you're talking about staffing concerns on how low you guys are on staffing. And so, I mean, you know, when I think about curfew, curfew's been in existence, I grew up here in Lubbock, it's been in existence forever. Curfew only works for people who follow the rules. It doesn't, our gangs that are out there, they don't care if there's curfew ordinance or not. They're going to continue to be out no matter how much we try to enforce the ordinance. Or, I mean, and, you know, do they even show up when we try to issue tickets on the juvenile side of it? My guess is probably not.
Well, they have to show, if they don't show up to pick up their child, then they go into child protective services.
Right. So I think the parents might, but of course, the children, these, these young people, I don't even want to call them children, because I deal with children every day. These are not children. And I've known Larry for a long time, I went to school with Larry's kid, and so, you know, that's personal for me. But these are not children that are out here running people over and shooting people, which, you know, we've talked about as well, that that's where we see our, you know, our murders and things. It's not just people randomly out, these are young peoples who are involved in gangs, who are involved in drugs. And so, you know, I believe in the curfew ordinance, but I believe it helps children. I believe it helps our good kids who want to be, you know, they don't want to get in trouble, they don't want to get a ticket, they don't want their parents to get in trouble. I'm not sure curfew helps with that situation. You know, my thing is, these kids that you guys are picking up that are violating the curfew ordinance, you say you take them currently to the detention center, because they've usually broken some type of law, they're actually being arrested. So tell me what the difference is between they've been arrested, they need to go to essentially kid jail, they're going to the detention center versus holding them at a patrol station. I'm confused on what the difference would be.
Well, when you, when you take them to a detention center because they committed some type of crime, burglary, car theft, or tampering or theft from an automobile, then you have that charge with them, and they go through the process and see the judge in regards to that criminal activity. The, the violation of the curfew is not a misdemeanor, it's not a Class A or Class B, it's more, it's, it's a city ordinance violation. But I would agree with you from the standpoint of, but again, this is more of a societal issue. Our juvenile criminal right now, we had a conversation just this morning during this, during this briefing, the question I asked him is, would, because of the felony that occurred with Larry, is the consideration to certify this person even on the table? And that's something that the DA's office is going to have to make the final decision on. But it's a 14-year-old, so the chances are that it probably won't be. But we are dealing with a different type of juvenile when you, when you get to these 15 and 16-year-olds in some situations. But, you know, there is a distance from, difference from a city ordinance versus a violation of the crime, of a crime, of a criminal ordinance there.
Okay. So what, so what kids would be held, that's what I'm trying to make that distinction, what children would be held at a patrol unit with an officer versus most of these who are actually out past curfew, who are actually committing felony crime?
Well, actually, it would just depend on if we got a call for service that a bunch of kids are out in, you know, the park, you know, drinking beer, and they're all 16-year-olds. You know, you have the violation of minor impossession, but you can also bring them in for the curfew violation. And is it the kids that, you know, they're out with their first, you know, with their buddies in their first, you know, six-pack and, you know, trying beer? But all of them, like I say, if they, if they committed a criminal act, then they're going to go through the judicial system. If they commit, if they're, if the only crime that they've committed is just the curfew violation, then they would go through that, that position.
So these are just normal kids who are just out past curfew? That's what you're looking to hold just temporarily until a parent can pick them up?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, now I understand. Yeah, the other ones would be going through the criminal route.
So if they commit a crime, they're going to jail? That's what, that's what's...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So how many kids a year do you think that y'all, y'all would pick up that are not committing a crime, that are actually out violating curfew, that just need to go sit and be babysat till mama can come pick them up?
I can tell you the juvenile curfew ordinance that we've written over the last three years. So, and I want to make sure I'm getting... So, and I want to make sure I'm getting this right, between us and LISD, we've written just over 378 citations for curfew violations.
And y'all can still write the citation even if they're not held, is that correct? You can?
Yes. We don't, like I say, say the parent is, you know, they call the parent while we got them detained, the parent can come over there, we'll issue the ticket to them right then and there.
Okay. So the process would just be holding them at a different center, because you can still write the citation even if they're not held at the patrol division?
Well, I think what, what we're talking about, the hours that we are, that we would have the detention center open, you're talking about the late night hours, the guys that, you know, we're not talking about the guy, the kid that is just out, you know, past curfew. We're talking about the folks that are out there between midnight and six o'clock in the morning, a lot, you know, a lot of our, if you look at a lot of the video that we get from some of our victims, you know, the ring video of the car break-ins, these are three and four o'clock in the morning. These are guys that are out there organized, trying to look for guns that are left in car, or, you know, expensive glasses and things like that. They're breaking windows and opening, lifting handles, getting into cars. So those, you have that criminal element with them, so you, if you catch them, you can charge them with that. But with the curfew ordinance and, you know, using people, our officers to go out and look for them, then you can, even if they're just walking on the street, you can stop them, ID them, find out how old they are, and take them to jail right then before they commit that crime.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief, for that information. So in 2022, how many times have, just LPD, since we're not talking about LISD budget, how many curfew citations has, and not arrests for juveniles, or how many, how many times have we issued citations this year?
And Mayor, I don't have the numbers broken down like that. I can get them for you and I can have them for you at the meeting on the 13th, but I don't have that. What I have here is all the curfew violations that were issued along with any type of crime that was committed, and it was issued during that time as well.
And I guess, just further clarification to Dr. Wilson's point, the person that harmed Officer Barnhill, they're in jail.
Yes, they're in jail.
They're not going to go be held at a patrol station.
No, sir.
So none of this, none of these funds will go towards those people that are committing offenses, right?
If they're committing a criminal offense, they're going to end up going to jail.
What are the parameters that you've given your officers and those on the street as far as enforcement of and ticketing of the curfew right now? What's the directive from you?
You know, right now, we don't have officers actively going out looking for juvenile curfew violators because of our staffing. Our guys are going from call to call. So if they get a call for service and they come into contact with that person, then they, and if they're not committing a criminal offense, then they can issue them the citation, they can put them in the back of the car and take them home and release them to a responsible parent or responsible adult. But I think what we're talking about in regards to this curfew enforcement is actively going out looking for curfew violators, and that's what this would do, is you're actually going out looking for curfew violators.
So would this budgeted money at this point, and again, you've heard the discussion of need more information possibly, would this half million dollars go, would that be for 20 tickets that were issued in 2022? Is that 40? Are we going to pay? Is there a reason officers can't have this part of their shift and be that they're being encouraged? I guess, are they being encouraged to write these tickets from command staff?
I don't, I don't know if encouraged is the right way. I know that my, that my patrol division commanders are working very hard to increase self-initiated activity. If they see it, stop it, find out what's going on. I can tell you that our self-initiated activity for 2022 is probably up well over 25%. Because when we see increase, like this year, you will see in the first six months of this year, that our theft on models and our burglaries have increased. So we are pushing hard, I know Assistant Chief White is pushing his guys hard to make sure they're increasing the self-initiated activity. So I would say that the division commanders are making sure their officers are working hard, and we can see that in our self-initiated activities. But to say that, hey, I just want you to go out here looking for juveniles, I don't believe they're doing that. They're just saying, you know, if it's a traffic violation, if it's suspicious activity of people walking down blocks, they're doing that. But I can't say that they're saying, go get curfew violators. And that's what, you know, if we do this, that's what that would do. And again, there's, there's a possibility we could try it for the first three months and see how it goes with our existing budget because of the amount of vacancies that we carry. It's just, that's at the direction of city manager and council.
So this is something we could see if we could have this type of suppression unit maybe, or something that you could allocate towards this and see if this is effective. If this turns into 20 tickets over three months, then maybe it's not worth, maybe it's not worth it. If it turns into 10 tickets, maybe not worth it. If it turns into 500 for a three-month period of time, maybe this is something that we really need to look into.
We evaluate everything. So it's something, and that's what this initial, the presentation or the initiative that Chief White gave me was initial, a 90-day thing to see how much, see what we netted out of that. And I think we could, we could still do this 90-day piece and try to figure out how it would work out.
Thank you. I know you're looking forward to coming up here on budget this year. Ms. Martinez-Garcia, I'm sorry, Mr. McBraer, I believe he was ahead of you.
Mr. McBraer, yes.
Chief, so do you have an idea or a hope that these, the increase in pay, you'll be able to fill some of these 19 positions? How is that recruiting going? Have you seen any effect of?
Yeah, that is truly our hope. With what has been proposed and presented to this council, we truly believe, one, we're going to be the highest paid in West Texas, and that's one of the things that we wish.
It should make a difference, shouldn't it?
It should make a difference. We should be able to, and again, you hate to rob Paul, you know, Peter to pay Paul, but, you know, we're hoping it'll.
We're Paul, though, so where is that?
We're hoping to attract some folks. Right now, I believe there are 62 that are still in the process right now. We're doing interviews for the, excuse me, for the 19 positions that we have available right now. We hope that we get more than 19 qualified candidates. Last year, the city manager allowed us to over-hire by five. We quickly, you know, through attrition, we get through those folks. But I'm sure if we come up with 25 qualified candidates, I would come to the city manager again and say, hey, can I over-hire because we're trying to fill these 19 positions? So we hope to, like I say, put three academy classes through this year, because one of the things that we have struggled with is filling the perpetual vacancies that we have. Because I think we could do so much more if we could just get full. We have never been full with certified police officers. We've had officers in the academy, and we counted them and say, hell yeah, we're full because we have, you know, 25 people in the academy, but they're not on the street, and they won't be on the street for another eight months. So our goal is to, hopefully with this latest pay increase, is to get full and see what we can do when we're full. Because we haven't, we've never been to that, in the situation where we could see what our capacity would be if we were full.
So if you fill those positions, or a good number of those positions, you could direct some of them to do this curfew activity? So the question I have on that then is, would these officers just be cruising the city, or would they be directed to high-crime neighborhoods? Because I mean, it seems that's the problem you're really trying to address, not just kids out late, you know?
It would be both. So we would have two two-person teams out driving around. We would use our data to find out where we're having car break-ins, where we're having car thefts, burglaries and things like that. Or even some of the entertainment districts to see if we have kids out there, you know, that are violating curfew. They would be directed strictly toward identifying curfew violators in using the data for high-crime area.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Martinez-Garcia.
When you said, I guess crime is everywhere, Mark, not just in one part of this, of this city. But I want to go back to clarifying real quickly. You have 19 individuals that just graduated from the academy.
Yes, ma'am.
And they're going to do PTO.
FTO, field training.
I was close.
It's field training, they're riding with another police officer for the next four months. So you have those 19 officers that aren't out by themselves yet.
They're not officially officers.
Yeah. Well, they're certified police officers, but they're not certified to be by themselves.
Got you. I've done Citizens Police Academy twice, so I recall that part. So those are the 19 individuals that we are hoping will complete the FTO to fill those 19 positions. And as you said, this has been an issue for years.
No, those, right. Ma'am, those are 19 positions that are out there. We have an additional 19 vacancies that we are going through the selection process right now to hire for, that will have to go through a six-month academy and then through another four months of break-in. So they are, if we, Nathan, what's the date of the start of the academy? October, October 24th? So everyone that's going through the process right now will start October 24th, so they will not be done with the academy and FTO until roughly August, you know, this time next year.
And currently, I just want to make sure that I understand, when we pick up one of these youth, that, you know, in what you were describing, a lot of them sound like they're tech students, but when we are picking up the youth, where are we taking them now? I just want to make sure that I understand that. Where are they going right now?
I'm sorry, you said they're tech students.
Well, you said something that made me about.
No, they would have to be 16 years and younger. They wouldn't be Texas tech students, but if we.
Or college students, that is. No.
No, ma'am, no, they're not college students. These are 16, I'm sorry, 16 years and younger.
Okay. So where are we taking the 16-year-olds and younger now?
We would take them to the detention center.
Is that the county detention center or?
We would have to, excuse me, find a legal guardian or parent and turn them over to them at this time. That's the advantage of a, of a curfew center, is we take it to two officers and then those officers get back out on the street. So right now, we have to find a legal parent or guardian to turn them over to a court and release them.
But point of clarification, Chief White, that's only if they're committing a curfew-only violation. That's not if they're committing a felony or criminal offense. I think that's the distinction, Ms. Martinez-Garcia.
Yes, that's exactly right.
If they're committing a crime, and I want the public to know, if they're committing a crime, they're taking them to jail. If it's only because they're out and they're walking the street and maybe after curfew, that's, and we don't know how many of those tickets have been issued this year, is that correct?
Correct, so we can get that through.
No, I, that's exactly what I wanted to know. I think that's it for me.
All right. Ms. Joy, the floor is yours.
What I understood you and Officer White to say is that you looked at this 90-day period to try this program, but you didn't have money for it. Is that right?
Correct. We did figures, we figured it would cost us about $75,000 to do that program for that 90 days.
This would, these funds would enable you to do the program, not just for the 90 days, but for the remainder of the year. Would that be accurate?
Yes, ma'am.
I had the privilege of serving on council with Floyd Price, who was a Lubbock PD officer for longer than most of us can remember. And he's still very, very active. And what he explained to me about the curfew program when he was on patrol, it did two things. One, they had a place to take the juveniles. We're not talking about the ones who broke the law. They had a place to take them, and they did exactly what the ordinance said, because the ordinance was in existence at that time. But he said the other thing that it did was part of the community policing policy, where the officers got to know the kids. And he said it was absolutely amazing how many of those kids he saw in the future, and they would come up to him and talk to him, because they had an experience with the police officer at that facility and were put in a, in a position that they saw how it operated. He said it was very, very successful. And then apparently, we lost the place where you could take, take the juveniles in the program. Since then, has not been as designated in the ordinance. It's, we've kind of had to makeshift it. So I think Floyd Price is the one who convinced me that this will work if it's funded.
Ms. Martinez-Garcia.
Mr. Atkinson, can you clarify to me, in the changes to the proposed budget, it says increase professional services training, north, south, and east patrol divisions, and increase use of excess reserves. Can you explain to me what that is for?
Yes, ma'am, glad to do that. So that particular line item, and it's on the screen right above where it says debt service fund, that is actually the landscaping and the maintenance at those patrol division stations. The amount that we had programmed in your budget, we've gone ahead and taken our bids to be ready for the new year, and it was over by that amount.
That's it, thank you.
Mr. Atkinson, as to Exhibit G, is there a possibility that we could take $75,000? We've talked about other possible amendments of, with the sales tax and take $75,000 as a pilot for when we'd go into October, November, December for three months to see how many tickets this generates? If that was an amendment that was proposed, to see if we could do that within the budget that we have, so we could at least attempt or consider, the council consider that as a possibility, as well as keeping a no-revenue rate?
Yes, I think we could.
Any other questions on Ms. Joy's motion to amend Exhibit G? Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've said quietly, because just kind of wanted to hear what everyone had to say, and I see Judge Hernandez back there, who would on some occasions have to deal with the young people that we're referencing regarding curfew violations. I'm trying to hear as best I can. I had a little bit of time in dealing with those folks 16 years and under, 10 to 16, should I say. And you can answer this for me, Chief, and probably Judge Hernandez, those individuals who are going to be, who would be picked up for solely curfew violations are not the ones out there doing the majority of the criminal activity. Am I correct?
You're probably correct on that.
And I remember back when they had the curfew facility, it was right off of Avenue L. And they utilized it, however, working at the Juvenile Justice Center, and by the way, it's not juvenile jail, it's the detention facility. We kind of take, yeah, Juvenile Justice Center. I understand the concern with the curfew, but I'm more concerned with the, those individuals who are breaking the penal code, who are committing criminal activities, they're the ones that you're going to find, who are going to be your more aggressive individuals, they're going to be the ones who are in packs, should I say, or in groups, who are committing your car burglaries and things of that nature. It's very seldom that you'll have someone doing that alone. And a lot of those, those young people are savvy enough to try to make sure the PD doesn't get them.
Yes, ma'am.
So I understand the need, I'm just concerned is of the amount of focus we need to have just solely on the curfew. I think there's a lot of other things, I think there's a lot of other things that we can focus on in addition to that for those folks. So I understand that the curfew is definitely an issue. I would almost tend to say it's more of an issue during the daytime than it is sometimes compared to, to the night. So I understand the concern, I really do, I really do. I dealt with that for a long time, but I'm just not sure if that should be our only focus, is just solely on the curfew, because there's some young folks out there doing a whole lot of stuff. And it's not late at night all the time. So I'm still listening, and I do believe, I don't have any problems with us at least be, is that me? be, is that me? Oh, shoot. Sorry for that, that just meant we ought to be at home by now. So I can, I can, I, I don't have any issue with us looking at it, maybe for those 90 days to see, you know, where we are now in this day and age. But I, I still, I do not believe that that is where a lot of our attention would, should be required to, to focus, because those booger bears who are out there doing all the other stuff, they're either looting the officers because they're not enough on the, out in the field to do that, which is a huge concern for me.
Yes, ma'am.
Not having enough officers to do whatever it is that we need, even to catch some of the other folks as they begin to commit some of the other criminal offenses. So I don't have any issue with supporting to see, see where we are. I don't, I don't have any issue with that. And I'll wait my turn on the changes to the proposed 22, 23 budget, because I'm concerned about that, too. I, I heard Ms. Michael Ward, as she spoke about years past, and one of the things that, one of the terms that she used was the city was bankrupt, was almost bankrupt. And I remember in 2004, when the, when the tax rate plummeted in this city, and we were about to the point that we couldn't afford to buy a loaf of bread in these parts, and I am concerned with that being the potential case if we're looking at the no new revenue tax. So I have those concerns, but I did, I wanted to give myself an opportunity to hear before I commented.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Patterson Harris. Ms. Joy?
And I appreciate Councilperson Patterson Harris' comments, because I kind of divide these into three groups. One is the kiddos at 16 and under, who are truly not where they're supposed to be under the ordinance. And then I heard her say, there's, there's a group out there that are real smart and they just, they hide from you guys.
Yes, ma'am.
And then the other group are the ones who get caught, and then they go into the justice system. At that point in time, we really lose control over those. We don't, we can't tell the judges what to do, we can't tell those parents what to do, we kind of, we lose them. We just charge them, turn them over. The ones who elude the, the police, who would be juveniles, might be, we could catch, maybe you can catch them, I don't know. But the other group, the ones who, they're trying their wings, they're running around with the wrong crowd, maybe, we may be able to turn those kids if we can, your officers, I've seen them with, with these kids. They don't jump on them, they talk to them. We might be able to turn some of these kids and keep them from doing what you suggested earlier. Maybe I'm out and I shouldn't be, and I get this impulse that maybe I'll just break in this car. Maybe we can do some prevention, if we enforce the ordinance the way it was intended to be enforced, and it's not been.
And I've watched, I've watched enough in-car video camera and body-on camera, I can tell you that 99.9% of police officers, no matter what the age, if they come in contact with someone, that even they've, they've taken to jail. The conversations, that car conversation that goes on, you know, some of it's just, what are you thinking? Do you know how this can affect you down the road? So, you know, I think you could run into every police officer, including myself, I've had people thank me for taking them to jail. So I don't think that those conversations are not happening in cars and in those private, you know, in those, those one-on-one contacts. So I, I agree with you, you know, there are some that we're gonna be able to save, and I think every police officer, that's, that's their goal, that, that's, that's why we get into this business, is to, is to make a difference. And there's some that, you know, are hard, are just harder, not to crack.
Thank you, Chief. And I, and I agree with Ms. Joy, that we do need to enforce an ordinance, so it's an ordinance for a reason, and we need to enforce it. I just have the opinion that we have this much discussion on the dais now, we don't have all the statistics and numbers, and we want to allocate $440,000 to this point. I think we need to test this, and we need to look at this before we move forward with making this a permanent plan. And to Ms. Patterson Harris's point, we need to really analyze this before we make this a pinpointed issue. And so that's, again, to that point. Does anybody have any other chiefs for the, questions for the chief? I'm just, any more chiefs? Wait a minute. It's, your, your phone said it was time to go home, so I'm already, any other questions for the chief? All right, thank you, sir. Mr. McBrayer, do you have another comment?
Vote.
Before we take a vote on that, does anybody have any further discussion?
We can just vote on the amendment, and we can take a quick break. Any other discussion on Ms. Joy's amendment to Exhibit G? All right, Ms., we have a, a motion to amend the proposed amendment by directing the funds realized from the elimination of four heavy equipment operator, three positions from paved streets, one senior grounds maintenance worker position from park maintenance, and three park construction and maintenance worker positions for park maintenance in the approximate sum of $440,116 to increase staffing and operations in connection with enhanced enforcement of the juvenile curfew ordinance. All in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed by nay?
Nay.
Ms. Patterson Harris, I'm sorry, I didn't get it.
I thought we were not able to amend it with $75,000 to, for the 90 days.
I think we'll be bringing that as an amendment. Motion does not carry. I believe that was 2-5. All right, this time, Mr. Atkinson and council, I would move to amend Exhibit G and to propose 2022, 2023 budget in similar fashion, that we find a way within the, I would get asked for, call for a motion, that would be the appropriate protocol at this point, asking for that to be amended to $75,000, Mr. Atkinson? Would that be correct?
That, that is correct, Mayor. It would be to increase the appropriation by $75,000 and to direct that revenue to this called juvenile curfew enforcement pilot program.
Mr. Weaver?
I was just gonna, someone would need to make that motion and get a second. Yes, sir.
I'm just saying that would be the appropriate avenue if we wanted to move in that direction, if anybody would, would like to call that as a motion.
Call that as a motion.
All right, Ms. Martinez Garcia calls it as a motion, appropriation of $75,000 to this program.
Say it.
Dr. Wilson, a second. Is there any further discussion on this? Mr. McBrayer?
So without any offset for that out of sales tax revenue, that would put us above the no new re, revenue rate. Is that correct?
And, yeah, let me be a little more clear. We're going to increase the appropriation, so we, we will increase revenue by $75,000. I would suggest you do it from sales tax at this point. And that same $75,000, the expense would go to the juvenile enforcement pilot.
Ms. Patterson Harris?
Yeah, I have a question. Is the $75,000 that we're looking to appropriate for the curfew pilot program, can, is there something that we can take on its own? Because otherwise, if we just add it to the changes to the proposed, the proposed 22, 23 budget, however we vote will say that we're either in agreement with this or not. But there may be some of us who are wanting to say yes to the, the pilot program, but not some of the things that are in the proposed budget.
The, this, who made the motion?
Ms. Martinez Garcia's motion.
Ms. Martinez Garcia. Allow, allow me to state it just a little differently, ma'am, and if it's, if it's acceptable, y'all, y'all can move forward. What I suggest is that the council instruct staff to increase the appropriation from sales tax by $75,000 and to direct that $75,000 to the juvenile curfew enforcement. In such case, regardless of which Exhibit G is adopted, this will apply.
And then that would in turn increase above the no new revenue rate?
It would, it would not.
Correct.
It would not. This would stand on its own.
And again, Ms. Patterson Harris, we're not voting on the proposed rate or the no new revenue rate at this point. We're just simply saying that would be an option under the Amendment G.
Okay.
And again, point of clarification, since we've never had to go through a no new revenue rate with this legislation, it's taking a little bit of, a little bit of back and forth for us to, because we have to determine what the revenue rate would be each time. So y'all bear with us on this. I think, is that as clear as mud? Is everybody clear on that? Any other questions on that?
Could I restate it, Mayor?
Mr. Massagel.
So, Mr. Atkinson, what you're suggesting is the, the increase in the appropriation, which comes from sales tax, which by the way, we keep talking about the property tax rate. Just so you understand, it's, the mayor's right, it's clear as mud. And in Ms. Martinez Garcia's motion, it is, has no bearing on the tax rate at this point.
No bearing on the property tax rate.
That's right. No bearing on the property tax rate. And then one final question, if we appropriate this money and we feel like this was a good move after 90 days into the budget, what is your suggestion then? Because I'm trying to balance, do we fully fund an effort, or are we partially funding? What do we do in 90 days?
90 days.
So at the end of 90 days, these, these dollars have been expended, the results from, from the actual, I don't think they're apprehensions, but the interactions with the curfew violators are good. I'm gonna need to find a way to come up with the other three quarters of a year. So to be clear, the pilot the chief mentioned that he and I went over back in March, it's $75,000 rough cost for 90 days, so times four is $300,000. I'd be short 225, and $275 million general fund budget, we'd start combing through it pretty tight.
Dr. Wilson?
Mr. Atkinson, so I have a question. So Chief Mitchell got up here and talked about 19 open positions currently that are not filled. I'm assuming in our current budget, those positions are budgeted for?
They are.
So could we, since he said the next academy class is not set to start till October, which would be next budget season, potentially pull money that might be in, from those positions if they're not filled? I, I mean, I don't know if he's actively recruiting to try to bring from other departments, but rookie-wise, we will not have any new officers until October of next year. Could we look into those funds to help? If this program is viable and it looks like it's a good program for the city, could we look at that money to potentially fund out of that money?
We, we could look there and just, I know the council understands, but just to be clear, the second we hire the recruits and they start, we start paying. So if, if a position was budgeted at $62,000 and you hire them in and they're a recruit, you're gonna pay them a little less, so you're not saving 100% of that salary. Multiplied over the size of the department, you probably could. The department also has overtime dollars. I wouldn't want to pull those down such that we can't do everything else, but we would just have to get busy and look.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think at that point, we'll know how many citations have been issued, we'll know a little bit more data-wise and what the effectiveness would be. Mr. McBrayer?
But this 90-day pilot program, if we were to vote to do that, we could put that in the last quarter of the year. It doesn't have to be funded. I mean, the concern was if it's successful, then what do we do for the rest of the year? If we're looking at it as a pilot program, we could put that off to the last 90 days of the year and then make the decision about whether we want to go for a full year in the next budget. Is that correct?
It is, and I would ask, you know, the council's patience to let me work with the chief. If we're going to try a pilot program, I want to try it when it has the best chance of success. Is that in the spring? Is that in the summer? Is it carried through the winter? I think logic tells me that, you know, the months of November, December, January, we're not gonna show much. So I think we would wait till we start heading towards warm weather.
Ms. Patterson Harris?
I have a question. When you were looking at, you, you said anywhere about the difference would be what, 200 and what, 1,000?
For, to, to do it all 12 months, I would be $225,000 shy. And I'm doing the math on the fly, but I'm close.
But also the changes, part of Exhibit G, changes due to no new revenue rate, the general fund, it shows an increase in use of excess revenues to the tune of $287,952.
That's, that is one, yes. Again, flip back and forth, this one on your screen right now, with the red letters on it, this is what it would look like if ultimately the council adopts a budget that is supported by the no new revenue tax rate. If the council does not, and you adopt a budget that was proposed, what you're going to see over here, this is the Exhibit G that is not associated with those reductions, what you're gonna see over there is an increase of sales tax in the amount of $75,000.
Anything else, Ms. Patterson Harris?
Not ready.
Thank you. Ms. Joy?
Someone's used the term pilot program. I don't call this a pilot program. We have an ordinance that says it is unlawful to do certain things. So it's not a pilot program. Now, if, if you want to couch it, we'll fund it for 90 days, and we don't like it, that it doesn't get refunded, that's one thing, but it's not a pilot program. This is a program that's been in City of Lubbock for a long, long time. So just, just a comment.
All right. Any further discussion on Ms. Martinez Garcia's motion to amend Exhibit G for an appropriation of $75,000 towards this new program at the division stations? All right, all in favor of, oh, Ms. Patterson Harris?
Okay, because I want to make sure what we're actually voting on here, because there are two different pieces on this one sheet. Am I looking at that right?
Go ahead.
The, the vote before the council right now is strictly to increase the sales tax appropriation by $75,000 and to apply that to juvenile curfew enforcement.
Gotcha. Okay.
And it will, that, that will stand regardless of the ultimate budget choice that you make, if this passes.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, Ms. Patterson Harris?
No, I'm good.
Okay. No, I'm, I'm clear, it's good, it's good. Thank you for clarification.
Jack, I'm voting.
I assure you, you will not. All in favor of this amendment to Exhibit G, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All oppose?
Nay.
All right.
One.
All right. Motion carries 6-1. All right. Now we are back to Exhibit G. Are there any other questions, any other discussion on Exhibit G? I think that's where we're at, correct, Mr. Weaver?
Correct.
All right, prior to that, let's take a, let's take a 10-minute break, and we'll resume back at 7:30. It is 7:19, so we are in recess till 7:30.
I'm going to...
All right. It is 7:30, and we are back in session from recess. We recently had an amendment by Ms. Martinez Garcia, carry 6-1. We are now back to Exhibit G, which is in discussion. This is a proposed amendment, Exhibit G, no new revenue rate, an amendment that would provide for no new revenue rate. We are still in discussion. Does anybody have any further discussion on Exhibit G? Mr. McBrayer?
Mr. Mayor, I move to amend the proposed substitution of Exhibit G as follows. Under changes due to no new revenue rate, general fund increased sales tax revenue to increase $441,081 currently by $91,609.14, which would be an increase to $532,612. to increase $441,081 currently by $91,609.14, which would be an increase to $532,690.14. And direct the said increase in funds be used for the operation expenses of the Maxi Park swimming pool facility for another year.
All right, Mr. Bray, do you have a copy of that for me, please? All right, we have a proposed amendment to Exhibit G from, I guess that would be an appropriation again of $91,609.14. Is that correct, Mr. Atkinson? All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second? No seconds to the motion of Mr. McBraer. All right. Motion will not carry. It fails. We are now back to Exhibit G. Any further discussion of Exhibit G and the changes to propose 2223 budget? All right, I have a motion and a second on Exhibit G for no further discussion. All in favor of?
I'm sorry. Which Exhibit G?
No.
We are voting on Exhibit G as amended by Ms. Martinez Garcia's motion.
So Mayor and Council, you have at your place an Exhibit G that about the middle of the page, it says changes due to no new revenue rate. It is also what is displayed on the wall. There is one change from what is on the screen and on your paper, and that is the $75,000 that was approved previously. The line that says increased sales tax revenue, the page says $441,081. With the $75,000, it would be $516,081.
All right, so that would be the vote as amended.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Patterson Harris.
So that would mean that we are voting as it states for G to include the no new revenue tax rate.
You would be voting on the budget that is supported by the no new revenue tax rate.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Any other questions? All right. All in favor of Exhibit G as amended, please say aye. Aye. All opposed by same sign or like sign? I didn't get the ayes.
I didn't either, Mayor.
I didn't get the ayes.
You can do a raise of hands.
Raise of hands, all in favor of Exhibit G as amended, please raise your hand. All opposed by same sign? I believe that's all for Agenda Item 1.0. No? Keep going, Mr. Weaver.
Yes, you have amended the budget and now you must vote on the budget as amended.
There we go. All right, all in favor of the amended budget, please raise your hand.
This is just the budget.
This is the budget.
The budget as amended.
All opposed by same sign? All right, motion carries, Ms. We're voting on the budget as amended under Exhibit G.
Could, Mayor, may I? May I bring, offer some clarification?
Yes, Mr. Massengill.
So we've already set, we essentially set the tax rate. We've already set the tax rate.
Well, that's, you're going to vote on that next. This was simply to approve the budget. Yes, you just approved the budget and you'll take up next the tax, the setting of the tax rate.
Out of this new vote now.
Well, the mayor's going to call up the next item and that will be the tax rate.
And the vote we just took on a budget is a budget that's supported by the no new tax rate.
Yes, correct.
And that is carried, and since those two have to equal, that's what we'll bring up next.
Yes, sir.
All right. So I'll go back again, all in favor of the 2022-2023 operating budget and capital program as amended, please raise your hand in favor. The budget as amended under Exhibit G, which you just voted in favor of.
Did we not already vote for that?
No, we have voted for Exhibit G, which amends the budget.
It's very confusing.
It's very confusing, but we are voting essentially for Exhibit G, which you voted for. But this is the entire budget as opposed to the amendment.
That's right.
Clear as mud?
I was confused.
That's all right. We are voting now to approve Exhibit G and the rest of the budget. All in favor of approving the 2223 operating budget and capital program, please raise your hand. And those opposed by same sign? All right, budget carries 4-3. Now we are moving to Agenda Item 1.4. The council will now vote on 1.4, which is the tax rate ordinance. At this point, with 1.4 and the amended budget of G, I will entertain a motion to approve and adopt a property tax rate that is a no new revenue property tax rate. Can I get a motion? Yes.
I move that City Council adopt a property rate that is the no new revenue tax rate of .476762.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on Agenda Item 1.4 as the no new revenue rate? Ms. Joy.
I just want, since we're finally to the rate, remind everyone of what Mr. Massengill said, and which we all know. We don't know what's going to happen in the future, which we did, but we don't have a crystal ball. And so we do know, because we forecasted, that next year we will need an increase, which will, by reducing this to the no new revenue rate, is going to cause a larger increase. And so for the citizens of Lubbock, it has always been the best policy is to keep your rates level if you possibly can, because people budget on an annual basis. And it's better not to do the ups and downs for people who are trying to make their budgets for the, for the year. And we already know, because the city manager has told us that it's going, we will have an increase and this will make that increase more. So I cannot vote for it. This has been a contentious issue through the campaigns and I really think if the citizens of Lubbock thought that this was an important issue, they would have been here. And they're not. And I'm not talking about those of you who are here because you're sitting in for the police department or whatever. I'm talking about John Q Public. So I will be voting no.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. And I'll say, I've heard from many people that saw an extraordinary spike in their appraised values this year. And Ms. Joy is right that we don't know what the future holds, but we do know what this year's budget shows, and that is we are able to do this for the taxpayer this year. We don't know about next year, but we cross next year's budget next year. And we may have an exponential growth as we continue to see Lubbock grow in sales tax. It continues to put us ahead of the game. We have opportunities next year to see increase in permits and residences and property taxes. There's a lot of options that we have, and this year we have the option to do this. I think it's important for our taxpayers, I think it's important for those on fixed incomes to, for them to know that this is where it will be next year. And there's no way for anyone to say next year that this has to go up so much and not keep a flat rate. That's just absolutely not the case, because again, we don't know what next year holds. And so I think this is a good way for us to, to show that if we're going to come to you as a taxpayer to ask for $200 million in street and road bonds, that we try to keep your property tax assessed payment as low as we possibly can in good faith. And so I will be, as probably is known, very much in favor of a no new revenue rate. And I think that's important to our taxpayers, and I've heard that for at least a year. And so it's not just that they're not here, it's that your voices are being heard. Mr. McBraer.
Yes, I just want to point out that these are not normal times. We cannot approach this budget as if it is just normal, a normal situation for our taxpayers. Again, the fact that they're not here doesn't mean they're not affected by it. They are. Anyone who's aware of the pulse of the country, not just our community, is how much people have been affected by inflation and people on fixed budgets, that, yes, they like to have a planned budget, but their budgets have been shot to pieces this year. And I, for one, cannot vote to increase that. I know the other people who will be setting tax rates have chosen to increase it, so people are going to be facing increases in their property taxes anyway. But I cannot vote for that this year. That doesn't mean that'll be the situation next year, but for this year, these are not normal times, and so my vote will be to support a no new revenue rate.
Ms. Patterson Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make sure that citizens heard this as well, that taxes were not raised this year, they were in fact lowered by four cents. So I don't want that to be, to go out for citizens to feel like that the proposed tax rate raised their taxes in, with regard to the rate. So that's what I want to bring forward.
Mr. McBraer.
You know, a rate can go down, but your taxes still go up and, because their appraisals have gone up. So the fact, the mere fact that we lower the rate does not mean that their taxes will not go up. So what we are doing is a no new revenue rate for people who have existing properties this year, just to be clear about that.
Ms. Patterson Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought I was being clear, and I just wanted to make sure that the citizens who are listening do understand that it was not the body of this council that raised their taxes this year. That's what I want them to be clear. So anytime we put out information, we want to make sure that they're getting all of the information and not just what we want them to hear. And that's what I was doing. It's not knocking you, Mr. McBraer, please know that. Please know that. And I feel like that's kind of where you went with this, but I wanted citizens to know, because a statement was made that you did not want the taxes raised, but please know, citizens of Lubbock, Texas, USA, that the taxes, the proposed tax rate was lowered by four cents, and that's what I wanted them to hear.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson Harris. I think that's also a really good opportunity to point out that we do not set the appraised value. That is not on us as a body, and I think that's important when people scream that their appraised value went up 30% or 18%, that's not on us. And so I just wanted to point that out. Those are both good distinctions. Ms. Joy.
My comment, but more specifically, that is done, the Texas legislature is in control of the appraisal districts and the appraisers. So that's a state function over which this city of Lubbock or the council has no control whatsoever.
All right, any further discussion on 1.4? All in, since we have a motion and a second, all in favor of approval of Agenda Item 1.4 as proposed by Mr. McBraer of a no new revenue rate, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed by like sign? Aye. All right, motion carries 4-3. All right, I think with Agenda Item 1.4 passing, I think that sets our tax rate, I think that sets with the amended G, I think that balances it with the tax rate. Anything else you can think of, Mr. Atkinson?
That's correct, Mayor and Council. You will have your second reading of both next week. The documents that will come to you in your agenda packet will be adjusted to match tonight's action.
Mr. Weaver.
Could you make the public announcement that's also up there for you as you close out?
All right, the City Council will vote on the tax rate on second and final reading on September 13th of 2022 at the City Council meeting in City Council chambers at 1314 Avenue K, beginning at 2:00 PM. And with that, I believe it is 7:46 and we are adjourned.